Hafaday, el comité de medioambiente, revolución y impuestos, adquisición de trabajo, estadísticas, investigación y planificación es llamar a este escenario público virtual a orden. Es ahora nueve horas de la mañana, miércoles 14 de julio de 2021. El notificación de esta audiencia virtual de esta mañana fue proporcionada a través de un correo electrónico a los senadores de los interesados locales el 7 de julio y el 12 de julio, cumpliendo con las condiciones de la ley de gobierno abierto. Me gustaría reconocer a los senadores que están aquí conmigo hoy. Senador Toniata.
Buenos días, Madam presidenta.
Y senador Joanne Brown, creo. Y eso es todo. Está bien, si me olvidé de alguien, asegurarme de hacer una nota. El propósito de este escenario público virtual es recibir testimonios sobre los siguientes apuntes ejecutivos: la señora Francis A Castro debe servir como miembro de la junta de directores de la Agencia de Protección Ambiental de Guam. El apuntamiento ejecutivo de el señor Wayne W Bigler debe servir como miembro de la junta de directores de la Agencia de Protección Ambiental de Guam. El apuntamiento ejecutivo de la señora Maria M Dunn debe servir como representante de deportes y turismo de la Comisión de combate armada en Guam. El apuntamiento ejecutivo de el señor Joseph M Christosimo Jr. debe servir como representante de los artes marciales mixtas de la Comisión de Combate Armada en Guam. Recibimos la notificación de que el candidato, el señor Patrick Sayama, su intención es retirarse como candidato. Así que no habría escenario para él. Así que los roles de conducta para este escenario público virtual son los siguientes: el invitado de este escenario va a anular a todos los participantes hasta que sea llamado por la presidenta. El fondo virtual no debe ser utilizado durante el escenario y la cara de los participantes debe ser visible en todas las ocasiones. Cuando hable, por favor, asegúrese de que esté anudado y que esté hablando en el micrófono. Los senadores se pueden permitir hacer preguntas a cualquiera de los candidatos después de que se dé testimonio. Las preguntas y testimonios deben estar confinados a la sustancia y naturaleza del programa. Y ahora para empezar nuestro agenda, para escuchar su testimonio sobre el apuntamiento de la señora Francis A Castro para servir como miembro de la junta de directores de la Agencia de Protección Ambiental de Guam. Y solo para dar un poco de fondo al público oyente, algunas de las responsabilidades de la junta de directores de Guam EPA incluyen las siguientes: Se deben servir como un organismo de apelación, así que cualquier ciudadano que cree que o ella ha sido amargado por una acción o decisión del administrador de Guam EPA puede solicitar un escenario antes de la junta. Así que también reciben una notificación de violaciones, cualquier tipo de infracciones o acciones de enfoque de cualquier entidad. Otra cosa importante es que la junta deberá nombrar un administrador para administrar cuestiones de la agencia bajo la supervisión de la junta. La junta también tiene la autoridad de nombrar un adjunto administrador que no es miembro de la junta y no tiene derecho a votar. Así que ahora pasemos al apuntamiento, el escenario para el apuntamiento de la señora Francis A Castro. Así que las notificaciones fueron enviadas a Guam EPA y a la junta de miembros de Guam. Así que me gustaría llamar a cualquiera aquí para testificar a cargo de la señora Castro. Así que tenemos a Trina Leberer, si pronuncié mi nombre correctamente, de los Partidos Regionales Pacificos. Ella es directora, actualmente directora, actualmente directora para esa organización. Así que Trina, eres reconocida para proporcionar testimonio.
Gracias, senador Pérez. Hafaday a ustedes y a todos los miembros del comité. Mi nombre es Trina Leberer y soy la directora de los Partidos Regionales Pacificos para la Conservación de Naturaleza. He tenido el placer de conocer y trabajar con Fran Castro durante más de 20 años. Nos encontramos primera vez cuando trabajé para la División de Agroecología de la Diputación de Agroecología de Guam, División de Relyales y Rellenas de la Diputación de Agroecología de la Diputación de Guam. Ella trabajó en la división de calidad ambiental de la CNMI como la administradora del programa de control de la contaminación no de punto de origen y monitoreo marino. Vi que presentó en el NASA CNMI Programa de Monitoreo Marino en la conferencia de medioambiente de las Islas Pacificas ese año en Guam e fui increíblemente impresionada por su liderazgo en establecer un programa tan groundbreaking que proporcionaba a los administradores marinos datos críticos para apoyar el manejo adaptativo y ese programa todavía continúa hoy. En ese rol, Fran también lideró el éxito de la campaña para obtener la aprobación de NOAA y EPA para el programa de control de la contaminación de la agencia de la CNMI de la costa, lo cual también fue groundbreaking. Fue tan efectiva en sus roles en DEQ que cuando el gobierno de la CNMI decidió fusionar DEQ con el programa de gestión de recursos costeros, Fran fue nombrada como directora de la división de gestión de recursos costeros para el nuevo Bureau de calidad Ambiental y Costero. Ella lideró la división con visión, integridad y un compromiso dedicado a reclutar y mentorizar a un fuerte equipo de champions ambientales. De hecho, toda su carrera ha sido dedicada a la gestión y conservación ambiental. Ella es miembro fundador de la Alianza de Naturaleza de las Islas Micronesias, actualmente sirviendo su segunda vez como mina presidenta. Y si eso no es suficiente, también es dueña y presidente de Blue Solutions, una consultoría de gestión especializada en la sostenibilidad ambiental. En preparar el testimonio, tenía tantos ejemplos de las capacidades, conocimiento y habilidades que Fran iba a traer al board de Guam EPA que no puedo enumerarlos todos aquí, pero compartiré un ejemplo ilustrativo. Cuando empecé a unirme a la Conservación de Naturaleza, me introdujeron a un instrumento de planificación participativa, planificación de acción de conservación. Presenté el CAP a la comité de las islas, de la cual Fran era miembro de la CNMI, como un instrumento potencial para ayudar a los administradores a desarrollar planes de gestión basados en sitios. Fran levantó su mano inmediatamente como la primera a pilotarla en La La Bay, uno de los sitios prioritarios de la CNMI. Llevó a todos los principales interesados y los facilité a través del proceso de planificación. Fran usó el CAP para desarrollar una propuesta convincente, lista para financiar desde el 2008 Acto de Recuperación y Reinvestigación Americana y lideró la implementación de las acciones identificadas en el plan, resultando en mejoras medibles a la critical importancia de los corrientes ecosistemas. Este ejemplo demuestra la voluntad de Fran de experimentar e innovar, adaptarse y capitalizar en las oportunidades emergentes y impulsar resultados impactantes. Todas las habilidades de advertencia demuestran sus excelentes calificaciones para servir al pueblo de Guam en la Junta de Guam EPA. Gracias, Jesús Masi, y gracias por la oportunidad de proporcionar testimonio.
Jesús Masi, Trina, por ese testimonio. Así que ahora me gustaría reconocer a la siguiente persona que ha venido a testificar a cargo de Francis Castro es Frankie Elliptico. Frankie, eres reconocida.
Gracias, senador. Hafaday Zantiro, del Commonwealth de las Islas Norde de Marianas. Gracias por darme esta oportunidad de hablar en esta audiencia pública. Mi nombre es Frankie Elliptico y aunque estoy aquí, estoy aquí en mi capacidad personal, actualmente sirvo como vicepresidente de administración y avanzada en el College de Marianas. También sirvo en la junta de directores de la Alianza de Naturaleza de las Islas Marianas, una organización no lucrativa basada en la CNMI, dedicada a la conservación de los diversos recursos naturales de las Islas Marianas. Estoy aquí hoy, igual que Trina lo fue, o es, para expresar mi fuerte apoyo para la nominación de la señora Francis A Castro a la junta de la Agencia de Protección Ambiental de Guam. He conocido a la señora Castro durante más de 20 años y a través de su muy notable carrera y su participación activa en la custodia ambiental, incluyendo en los años en que fue directora de la división de gestión de recursos costeros, DCRM, administradora del programa de monitoreo marino en DEQ, personal del board de directores de la junta de directores de la mina, representante de la CNMI en la Corriente de Rellenas de Estados Unidos, miembro del Comité de Caminada de la Micronesia, miembro de los Micronesianos en la conservación de islas y en sus muchos otros roles y capacidades como champions ambientales. Perdón, estoy recogiendo de un cuello, lo siento, mi voz está volando. La experiencia directa y la liderazgo de la señora Castro en muchas iniciativas de conservación ambiental han guardado su profundo respeto de sus compañeros y la comunidad. Ha guiado y impulsado la política pública para ayudar a expandir principios que avancen y protegen el hábitat natural, construir partnerships públicos y privados y ampliar la comprensión y apreciación del medio y su impacto en nuestra cultura, nuestra economía y nuestro pueblo. Siempre he sido inspirado por su liderazgo. Ella ha proporcionado continuamente direcciones estratégicas a las organizaciones, agencias no lucrativas, comités adhósicos y grupos de trabajo con honestidad, integridad y una pasión sincera por la conservación ambiental. También ha mentado a muchos estudiantes, muchos empleados y otros individuos que ahora sirven en capacidades de liderazgo. No tengo duda, perdón. No tengo duda de que la valuable experiencia de la señora Castro, su vasta conocimiento y el fuerte compromiso con el medio serán tremendos activos para la EPA de Guam. Puedo probar su carácter, su visión y su dedicación a la servicio público. No conozco a ninguna otra persona que mejor embodiede el marco de la EPA de Guam: "Todo ser vivo de la tierra es uno". Miembros honrables del comité legislativo de la Agencia de Medioambiente, reveniente y impuestos, adquisición de trabajo, investigación y planificación, respetablemente pido su apoyo a la nominación de la señora Castro. Gracias de nuevo por esta oportunidad de hablar contigo. Submitiré un copia de mis comentarios hoy al señor Evan, senador Nicolás, pronto después de esta reunión. De nuevo, gracias.
Muchas gracias, Frankie, y gracias por su testimonio. Me gustaría reconocer al senador Chris Duñez, que nos ha acompañado hoy. Y también veo al senador Telotitigui, así como al administrador de Guam EPA, Walter Leon Guerra. Bienvenido, bienvenido, Walter. ¿Te gustaría proporcionar testimonio esta mañana?
Sí, señor. Gracias mucho. Lo siento, llegué tarde. Estamos actualmente en nuestra reunión de directores de las islas Pacificas y así voy a volver a estar allí para hablar con los otros directores y el consejo regional de Estados Unidos EPA. Te proporcionaré mi testimonio escrito, que contiene todas las especificaciones sobre Fran y todas las cosas que ella hace. Pero lo que me gusta hacer cuando hablo es hablar de mi corazón. He conocido a Fran durante mucho tiempo, desde que ella trabajó en DEQ y gestión costera en Saipan. E incluso aunque yo y Fran estamos muy cercanos, nos conocemos muy bien. Ella no va a, ella no tiene miedo de decirme que estoy haciendo algo malo, o ella piensa que estoy haciendo algo malo. Y creo que eso va a ser uno de los aspectos más fuertes de tenerla en la junta. Debido a nuestra amistad, ella no va a tener miedo de decir, bueno, ¿qué estás haciendo? ¿Por qué lo estás haciendo? Y espero su trabajo en esa capacidad. Espero que los senadores entiendan que nuestra amistad es la cosa que va a hacerla una mejor miembro de la junta porque ella no tiene miedo de decirme qué hacer. Ella no tiene miedo de decir, hey, creo que estás haciendo algo malo. Y creo, y sé que ella no lo hará. Y espero, espero que ustedes confirmenla. Si tiene todos los agradecimientos, como has oído de los otros presentadores, lo leerás en mi testimonio escrito. Pero de mí a ustedes, eso es lo que quiero decirte de Fran. Que es muy abierta a hacer las cosas bien para el medio ambiente. Pero también es muy fuerte de decir, bueno, no creo que estés haciendo bien, o el mismo tono dice, creo que estás haciendo un trabajo maravilloso. Y voy a mantenerlo corto. Eso es realmente lo que siento, pero Fran siendo miembro de la junta es, sé que tengo a la gente como el resto de la junta. Tengo a alguien que me va a sacar por la cabeza y decir, hey, ¿qué estás haciendo? Así que espero que ustedes confirmenla. No creo que haya alguien mejor que puedan tener en nuestra junta. Con eso terminaré mi testimonio. Gracias.
Sí, Jesús Masi, Walter, y gracias por tomarse el tiempo. Así que, ¿hay alguien aquí que quiera testificar a cargo de Francis Castro? Okay, no vemos a nadie más aquí para testificar, así que me gustaría invitar a la candidata a sí misma. Hafaday, Francis.
Buenos días, buenas tardes a todos, senadores Pérez y miembros del comité, amigos y colegas que están aquí para testificar, que testificaron a mi cargo. Jesús Masi, y gracias por la oportunidad de estar aquí. Estoy muy honrada y agradecida de estar aquí y por recibir la oportunidad de servir la isla trabajando para proteger nuestros recursos naturales para el beneficio de nuestras futuras generaciones. Primero, me gustaría reconocer y agradecer al gobernador Leon Guerrero y el gobernador Tenorio por su confianza en nominarme a la junta de la EPA de Guam. Jesús Masi. Me gustaría compartir un poco sobre mí mismo, aunque has oído hablar de Trina y Frankie. Actualmente soy la directora asociada de la Universidad de Guam, Programa Seagrande. He estado con el programa desde 2018 y traigo conmigo una gran experiencia en gestión costera y ambiental. Fuera de supervisar varios proyectos de conservación, estoy trabajando para llevar el programa de programación de la isla a un nivel institucional. Un proceso de aplicación de dos años que nos proporcionará recursos superiores para el programa para continuar abordando sus áreas centrales de ecosistemas costeros saludables y liderazgo ambiental y desarrollo de la estructura. Actualmente co-chaire el comité de los recursos naturales prosperantes en la iniciativa de crecimiento verde de Guam, que alineada con los objetivos de desarrollo sostenible de la ONU y trabajando hacia lograr un futuro sostenible y equitativo para Guam. También sirvo en la junta de directores de la Fundación de la Seguridad Costera, localizada en Washington DC, que empoderan a las organizaciones costeras y líderes para cumplir con los desafíos económicos, sociales, culturales y ambientales enfrentados a los costados y océanos de la nación. Antes de relocar a Guam, he estado trabajando en el campo ambiental durante aproximadamente 20 años. Primero como administradora con la división de calidad ambiental de la CNMI, control de la contaminación no de punto de origen y monitoreo marino y luego como directora del programa de gestión de recursos costeros. Ambas agencias, como has oído, han fusionado y ahora es conocida como el Bureau de calidad ambiental y costero. En mi tiempo en la CNMI, trabajé con y representé a cuatro gobernadores en varios organismos regionales: la Corriente de Rellenas de Estados Unidos, el comité de las islas de Estados Unidos, que asistí durante siete años, el organismo de planificación regional Pacífico, el Caminada de la Micronesia y la Organización de las Escocias de los Estados Unidos. Mientras era CRM, fui la personal del board CRM, que consiste de siete agencias regulatorias que revisaron todos los principales proyectos de desarrollo para la CNMI. Mi rol fue asegurar que cada agencia realizara una revisión técnica para cada desarrollo principal en acuerdo con su mandato. Mi otro rol es asegurar la compliance con todas las condiciones de permiso y aplicar la non-compliance. En mi tiempo como CRM, he emitido muchas notificaciones de violaciones y recopilado multas cerca de un millón de dólares antes de irse de Saipan. No era algo popular de hacer, pero tenía que hacerlo para proteger nuestros recursos. En 2005, durante el medio camino de mi carrera, cofundé la Alianza de Naturaleza de las Islas Marianas, la primera organización no lucrativa de conservación establecida en Saipan para educar y involucrar a la comunidad en prácticas de conservación y medioambiente. Y actualmente soy la personal de la junta de directores de la mina. DEQ, donde empecé mi carrera ambiental, es una agencia semejante de la EPA de Guam bajo la región nueve. Por lo tanto, soy familiar con los programas de la EPA de Guam mientras trabajamos y entrenamos juntos como administradores. El management y el personal de la EPA de Guam eran mis contrapartidos y sé que muchos de los personal y sé cuán conocedor y dedicado son a su trabajo. Siento muy afortunada de ser designada a la junta de la EPA de Guam porque puedo trabajar con ellos de nuevo, pero en una diferente capacidad. Soy nativa de Saipan, pero mi pasión corre profunda cuando se trata del medio, independientemente de dónde vivo. Quiero ser capaz de contribuir no solo a la agencia, sino también a la comunidad a la que pertenezco. Desde el movimiento a Guam, he reconectado con antiguos conocimientos y colegas y he aprendido a amar y apreciar la isla, a sus personas y al medio. Es muy similar a donde he venido, mismos problemas, mismos desafíos. Si se confirma, centraré en ayudar a la agencia a encontrar los recursos necesarios para crecer y el apoyo para los personal necesarios. Quiero ver las reglamentaciones mejoras, cerrar esos brechas y crear nuevas regulaciones si es necesario. Quiero capitalizar en sus capacidades de enfoque para generar ingresos recopilando multas máximas si es posible. Por último, tratar de llevar a la agencia a la frente para que sea más visible para la comunidad y así aprendan del importante trabajo que están haciendo. También animaría a una mayor presencia en los medios y la comunidad. No tengo todas las soluciones para hacer que la EPA de Guam sea la mejor agencia en Guam. Todo lo que acabo de mencionar suena como un árbol de tronco, pero estoy contenta de tener la oportunidad de hacer un intento. Mantendré mis éticas a los más altos estándares y si se confirma, comprometo con una voz impulsa y una nueva perspectiva a la junta de la EPA de Guam. Espero la oportunidad de contribuir a nuestra isla y afectar un cambio positivo como miembro de la junta. Gracias por su tiempo y le pido humildemente su apoyo.
Muchas gracias, señora Castro. Creo que, ya sabes, hablando con usted antes de este escenario, creo que su nominación es, ya sabes, es muy impresionante. Todo el trabajo que has hecho en el pasado y tú vienes, tú vienes con orgullo, debo decir. Todos los logros que has hecho y el hecho de, quiero decir, creo que estás dispuesto a tomar más responsabilidades muestra una pasión tranquila, debo decir, en cuanto al medio. Creo que la isla de Guam, siendo miembro de esa junta, siendo miembro allí, serás un gran activo. Y sí, apoyo a su nominación. Pero supongo que como presidenta de supervisión, necesito hacer preguntas para asegurarme de que, ya sabes, estamos apoyándote adecuadamente. Así que, ¿tiene algún conflicto de interés o ¿se prevece algún conflicto de interés con? Sabes, se mencionó que tienes un negocio de consultores. ¿Se prevece algún conflicto de interés, tener un negocio y servir en la junta?
No creo que tenga ningún conflicto de interés, así que mi consultoría realmente trabaja con agencias de Guam para ayudarlos a estar al día con las cosas y actualizar como sus reglas y regulaciones, así que no preveo ningún conflicto.
Okay. En cuanto a, así que están involucrados en muchos proyectos ahora. ¿Tiene, ¿estás comprometido a servir a la junta considerando todos los compromisos que tienes actualmente?
Sí, absolutamente.
Okay, y, así que sé que mencionaste en tu testimonio mucho de lo que planeas o lo que crees que puedes contribuir a la junta. ¿Cuál es la mayor, qué crees que es la prioridad? Como miembro de la junta, ¿qué crees que es una prioridad entre todas las cosas que mencionaste?
Así que realmente creo que la primera cosa es tratar de conseguir más recursos para la agencia y darles el personal que necesitan. Sé que carecen de personal y creo que hay muchos de ellos en la vanguardia de la jubilación así que realmente necesitamos trabajar en construir la agencia y darles ese apoyo, así.
Estoy de acuerdo. ¿Qué crees que son las mayores cuestiones enfrentadas en Guam ambientalmente? ¿Y qué crees, como miembro de la junta, qué puedes contribuir o qué puede contribuir la junta a eso?
Creo que hay mucho de dumping ilegal y problemas de basura solidas, pero también hay muchos esfuerzos por allí que están en curso que, ya sabes, las organizaciones y entidades están trabajando para resolver las cuestiones. Creo que eso es realmente muy grande, el problema de basura solidas es realmente algo grande, así que espero también tratar de encontrar soluciones y formas de contribuir a ese esfuerzo.
Okay, en cuanto a su agua. Sé que la isla de Guam, están mirando mapas, tal vez mirando redre la zona de protección de la agua terrestre. ¿Cuáles son tus pensamientos sobre eso?
Estoy actualmente no muy familiar con esas cosas, pero espero aprender más como, ya sabes, como me uní a la junta de directores.
¿Y qué ves como las mayores amenazas a su agua?
Probablemente el desprendimiento y la contaminación.
Okay, y ¿qué leyes crees que serían más efectivas para abordar esas?
Sé que la EPA no tiene regulación de agua tormenta, así que creo que esa es una de las cosas más importantes que me gustaría trabajar. Así que, ya sabes, cuando hay mucho desarrollo y movimiento de la tierra, realmente necesitas tener algún tipo de regulación para abordar esas cuestiones. Así que, y no tenemos eso ahora.
Y mirando atrás a tu carrera en las Islas Marianas, ¿qué puedes traer a Guam? En cuanto, ya sabes, a partir de tu experiencia, ¿qué crees que debe hacer?
Bueno, tengo mucha experiencia en, ya sabes, diferentes áreas en gestión ambiental, pero también, como, la única cosa que quiero hacer para Guam es realmente construir la capacidad de enfoque de la EPA de Guam. Necesitamos generar más ingresos y, ya sabes, Guam es una isla grande, tenemos casi nada de enfoque, muy poco. Y así sabemos que la EPA de Guam tiene algunos dientes y deberíamos tratar de capitalizar en eso para que podamos traer más recursos.
Genial, gracias mucho, Fran. Así que ahora me gustaría abrir el foro para mis colegas. Senador Toniata.
Gracias, madame presidenta. Buenos días, señora Castro, y gracias por aceptar la llamada del gobernador para, ya sabes, para la junta de directores de la Agencia de Protección Ambiental de Guam. Tengo un par de preguntas, tal vez, y tal vez puedas responder. Ya sabes, mencionaste acerca de traer a la EPA de Guam a la frente y hacerlo más visible para nuestros ciudadanos. ¿Cuáles son tus planes para lograr ese objetivo y hacer que la gente sepa que la EPA de Guam está allí y que los trabajos de la EPA, qué pueden hacer para expandirse y ser más conscientes ambientales?
Creo que trabajaré con la agencia, ya sabes, como el oficial de información pública, asegurarme de que, ya sabes, lo que esté pasando en la agencia, si están emitiendo notificaciones de violaciones y cosas así, ya sabes, cualquier trabajo que estén haciendo, aseguramos de que se enfade esas cosas para que estén en los medios y la gente sepa lo que está pasando, ya sabes. Si emite una notificación de violación a nuestra empresa, creo que la gente debería estar consciente de eso y saber que, ya sabes, están haciendo algo mal y dañando el medio. Así que sería bueno que la gente comprenda eso, pero también solo dejarles saber qué es la EPA de Guam, qué están haciendo, ya sabes, cuál es su trabajo y cuán importante es proteger el medio. Así que espero.
Y creo que eso es importante, es para que la comunidad pueda estar consciente de lo que hace la contaminación o incluso el dumping de basura ilegal en la parte norde de donde está el agua. Ya sabes, cuán dañino podría ser eso a nuestros bosques de agua. Y creo que la EPA de Guam, ya sabes, están haciendo todo lo que pueden. Y creo que cuando empezamos a pensar fuera de la caja, cómo podemos mantener nuestra comunidad consciente del daño que están haciendo a nuestra agua, entonces, ya sabes, sacar el mensaje y ser más ambientalmente friendly, entonces, ya sabes, espero que puedas lograr ese objetivo y hacer la EPA más visible para el público.
Sí, la educación es realmente clave para, ya sabes, aumentar la conciencia para el público. Y aprendí que eso fue una de las primeras cosas que aprendí cuando empecé mi carrera, es que la gente no está consciente de lo que está pasando en el medio. Así que soy una gran creyente en la educación y la difusión y actualmente estoy haciendo eso en mi trabajo con mi personal, así.
Eso es genial de escuchar. ¿Estás de acuerdo con, sé que el gobernador salió hace un par de meses acerca de hacer la recolección de basura obligatoria, 100% obligatoria? ¿Estás de acuerdo con eso o qué son tus pensamientos sobre ese tema?
Creo que, ya sabes, cualquier solución que puedamos想想出來試著減緩汙染,我們至少應該試一試. No sé, no sé que, ya sabes, esa es la solución perfecta para todos los basura, pero si es algo que podemos intentar, creo que deberíamos intentarlo.
Okay, lo veo. Ya sabes, estaba mirando su paquete de aplicaciones que nos fue enviado y en su declaración de interés financiero noté que el nombre y la dirección de su interés de negocio estaba roto. ¿Hay razón para eso?
No, no estaba roto cuando lo envié.
Así que, ¿cuál es el nombre de su interés de negocio que se mencionó en su paquete aquí?
También, actualmente propiedad de una empresa de consultoría ambiental, solo una empresa muy pequeña, solo yo y un asociado en Saipan. Y así nuestros proyectos están trabajando con algunas agencias de Guam, como el programa de gestión costera de Guam, tratando de actualizar sus políticas y planes, así que eso es hasta el extent de nuestros proyectos.
¿Y cuál es el nombre de su empresa?
Blue Solutions.
Blue Solutions, okay. Sí, de esa manera solo puedo tenerlo aquí en mi registro porque estaba roto y solo quiero asegurarme de tenerlo aquí. Pero, madame presidenta, estas son las únicas preguntas que tengo y, ya sabes, agradezco al candidato por subir al palo y espero votar en su información. Gracias, señora Castro. Lo aprecio.
Gracias, senador Toniata. Me gustaría reconocer al senador Rigel, que nos ha acompañado hoy. Así que ahora me gustaría reconocer al senador Joanne Brown, si tiene preguntas para el candidato.
Gracias mucho, madame presidenta, y ciertamente aprecio a la señora Fran Castro aceptar la nominación para servir en la isla de Guam. Ms. Fran Castro accepting the nomination to serve at the Guam EPA Board. I mean, as we've seen this morning. Uh, she certainly has a very impressive resume. I wish everyone that was nominated to the Guam EPA Board carried her credentials. I first, uh, met with Fran when she was working with DEQ. Uh, and was able to recently talk with her at a function, uh, that was scheduled with the conservation officers and. Um, other members, uh, that were involved in the environmental side, including sea grants where she currently works now. Uh, when they were doing the launch, public launching of the Toca app and I was able at that function to be able to talk with her and catch up and. Certainly hear of the current work that she's doing and certainly her involvement, um, in putting that app together that I think is a very wonderful contribution to the community to magnify. Uh, the awareness and enforcement capability within our community because obviously. Uh, no matter how many resources you have within an agency, you're not always going to be there at the time incidences may happen. And having members of the community also feel involved in a sense of ownership and empowerment. Uh, that when they see violations or something that they're concerned about, they have a means of being able to. Uh, relay that information to the appropriate government authorities so that, you know, appropriate review and action can be taken, so. I certainly appreciate her contribution, but I see also in the discussion that, that has been relayed this morning and certainly by the comments of, uh. Fran herself and certainly Senator Tony Ada, I, I concur. I think what is lacking at Guam EPA now is, is a level of public visibility. Uh, that the agency has had in the past and, you know, I, I speak firsthand. I mean, it's, it's been thirty years since I was first appointed Deputy Administrator of Guam EPA. And while I understand the size of the agency pretty much has not grown in that thirty year period because it's, it has about the current staffing capacity as it, it had when I was there. But one of the things we did do and were very effective with is our ability to maximize those limited resources and focus where there were critical issues of enforcement. Making sure that we took effective action and had considerable visibility. Uh, we were, one of the agencies that entered one into the very early agreements with the Attorney General's Office to be able to have. Uh, our own legal counsel assigned to, uh, Guam EPA so that as regulatory agency, we could be properly advised and during enforcement. Uh, and then of course, if there are any challenges to any violation notices that were, were entered into, um, you know, our board also had proper consultation. With legal counsel to ensure that as these cases move forward, uh, we were on the right side of the law. And keep in mind, we were doing this at a time when there's considerable development on Guam. I mean, right now, a lot of that focus and attention are on the military bases. Uh, but back in the early nineties, we were constructing significant amount of new golf courses and a number of the hotels. I mean, back in the early seventies, there was the Hilton. Uh, you know, the Akura, the Fujita, the Reef, um, Daiichi. And then everything in between was open space and that's not the case now, obviously. I mean, we had. Uh, significant construction within the hotel industry as well. Uh, if Guam EPA could do it during that time of considerable development as well, including Manangan Hills within construction. And do it with that staffing capacity and be effective, I don't think there's any reason now. Uh, that the agency cannot be more visible with regards to awareness, education, but more importantly, enforcement. Uh, and Fran, I appreciate your, your input with regards to what the laws are, but I will tell you. Guam EPA has significant legal capabilities. It's a question of exercising it. It's having teeth and you can sharpen those teeth as sharp as you need to. Uh, to respond to respective enforcement action because I find that when people know you're going to follow through. Uh, they're going to be a little more hesitant to want to violate those laws if they know, oh my goodness, the government, there's consequences to it and. And I think Guam EPA has not been as effective, um, in recent years of, of executing its responsibilities legally. If it has, it has certainly has not had that, that public visibility, so. Madam Chair, I don't have any, any questions for Fran. I don't question her credentials. I think they're extremely impressive. I mean, she doesn't just talk about what she. She believes in, she lives what she believes in, and I'm sure she'll be a wonderful and a very effective contributor to the dialogue at the Guam EPA Board. So she certainly has, has my endorsement and thank you Fran for continuing to do all the work that you do and. I look forward to the success of the agency, uh, with you serving as a board member and your guidance and leadership that you're going to bring to the table. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on her nomination.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
All right, thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Kadeegui, you're recognized.
Sis Masin, and good morning, Madam Speaker. Sorry for, I apologize Fran for being late. Um, I'm kind of like, uh, listening back to what you said and everything that. That was said before you, which were great testimonies and of course, reading your, your bio as well and, uh, I like. I share the same sentiments with my colleagues that it's very impressive. In fact, I had to look twice because you look so young. I think that's the time of. I think your, your, uh, career is the kind of career that most of us want to go into, they, to keep that youthful look. I had to, are you sure she's? You know, she looks so young. With all that, uh, background or, but you know, I, I, there's. I, I think there's several of us here who are here today who really take the environment seriously and advocate quite a bit. Uh, especially for EPA. Um, you've got fighters in this legislature that are standing by to protect everything that EPA stands for and it's in. And, and what it wants to do and its goals. And one of the things said in your testimony is about holding to the highest of, of your ethics, you know, um. As you sit on this board, I would greatly appreciate you saying that because sometimes you get pressure. Uh, from areas that, well, have individuals who put you in this position to. Make decisions that you don't feel are right and it, it puts you in a predicament. You know, uh, so I, I'm hoping, you know, uh, Fran, that you, um, stick to that. The importance of that because there could be pressure, you know, for you to do something you don't want to do. And, um, another one is, um, there is also pressure to take money away from EPA. And put it at another agency, which has been done in the past. And several of us have fought very hard to keep that money at EPA. There are many programs that EPA has been trying to launch, you know, uh, to put forward. And, uh, a lot of it has been stopped because money is being funneled out, um. Through the revolving recycling fund. So, um, I don't know how much time you've had to research some of the work that EP's, EPA has done in the last year. And some of the programs they want to put forward. But is there anything in particular that you would like to, um. Uh, you know, uh, ensure as far as a program from EPA that, that hasn't been started yet. That you would like to see happen?
Um, well, currently we shouldn't really start new things because, until we fix the problems. So, right now, I think the biggest, uh, problem that we have there is like staff capacity and resources. That will just be my main focus for now, um. Not sure about starting new things and I haven't really, um, done research of what's been done in the past year, so. I would like to learn more, though.
Good, that's, that's a start. Thank, yeah, and then there was actually, uh, um, a bill that was out, uh. Last term, um, that actually, uh. Pointed out some of those different programs, so I hope you have an opportunity to look at that. Conchita Titanoe is. Such a great wealth of information and, and history that, um, I'm sure she'll share with you some of those points, so. I appreciate that and I do realize the issue on, on staff, so. Um, hopefully we can keep the money within, uh, EPA to address some of those issues that you see. And when anybody comes knocking on EPA door that, you know, think twice about, uh. Relinquishing funding that's in EPA to go outside other than what the purpose it was meant for. So, um. Generating revenue, I greatly appreciate that. It's going to be kind of difficult and I think you mentioned that, you know, enforcement, you know. Enforcement comes fines and fees with those who are, are breaking the law or in violation, so. I'm glad you're going to focus on that too, um. And, uh, I think that's it. I know that this, this, uh. Committee Chairwoman asked about, uh, your conflict of interest and University of Guam, uh, I, I know that you work for the University of Guam. So if there is any, um. Requests from the University of Guam, uh, regarding any kind of funding going in that direction, uh, will you be recusing yourself? If there is a vote on that?
Uh, I would like to be able to like review what the proposal is and. You know, if I need to recuse myself, I would recuse myself. I know, I'm sure that we're referring to the Guam Green Growth. Um, that was given, uh, you know, five hundred thousand from the recycling revolving fund, but. Really, I think in my mind that if anyone is out there, um, that wants to do, you know, good work to. Help protect the environment and our resources, then we should like give them that opportunity and of course. It should be benefiting the community, uh. First and foremost, so. But if there is a potential conflict of interest, then of course I will recuse myself.
Okay, thank you for that, um, and your honest answer on that and, and it also, when, when recusing yourself, it's important that you don't engage in the conversation as well. If you're going to recuse yourself. So I greatly appreciate, um, you, you stepping up to the plate and serving, uh, the island of Guam. I know your daughter of Saipan. And I'm pretty sure that, uh, uh, you're going to keep them in mind too and, and, you know. Incorporate them into anything that Guam does that's going to benefit Guam will also benefit our sister island of Saipan. So, I thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I mean Chair.
Thank you, Senator Kadeegui. Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Sis Masin, Madam Chair and Ms. Castro. Sis Masi, look, we were a hugo that you accepted the governor's call to duty and, uh. You've had, uh, uh, some great testimony here this morning from, uh, some very distinguished individuals and. Once again, in looking through your credentials, I, I don't have any question that you're qualified and, and definitely will be. Uh, a much, um, you know, wonderful addition to EPA Board at this point. I really am encouraged at your focus, uh, basically on the staffing needs of EPA. As well as, uh, the enforcement, as well as the, uh, visibility. It really seems to me that, uh, you have done at least that core research and that you're ready to, uh, hit, hit the ground running. I'm also very encouraged that, uh, you've made that declaration clear here. You know, sometimes we think that individuals who are involved in, in, in different, uh, projects in the community. They have conflicts, but sometimes those are the best people also to be on boards. I take it back to my experience on the executive level. Uh, at land management. A lot of times we have, um, you know, in, industry experts. Who serve and they know when to recuse themselves, but the professionalism and the institutional knowledge that they bring. Is something that is so fundamental, uh, going forward. Uh, in closing, I, I just hope as well as, as my, uh, colleague Senator Ada mentioned that. You know, the, the issue of the, of waste management and I'm glad, solid waste, I'm glad you brought that up as really the key. Uh, uh, very major issue, uh, you know, that our island is facing. You know, as the governor has called for, um, the mandatory, uh, you know, trash collection service household wise. You know, I think that that's something, even if it needs to be subsidized at some level or some sort of, um, you know, uh, uh. Tiered rate for those who are very financially strapped, I still think it's, it's the right way to go, uh, because that's the source, right? Uh, for a lot of this, uh, uh, waste issues. So I would hope that you would also continue that visibility, but I think it's also going to be the enforcement, uh, as you've discussed and the visibility. From the EPA side that can turn the tide on maybe some of the attitudes about how we, uh, manage our waste stream. And what effect it has on our, on our beautiful island, not only environmentally. But on our economy because of the fact that we're, uh, you know, welcoming guests and even ourselves. Living amongst, uh, these wonderful paradise and it should remain clean, so. I don't have any questions. I just want to say Sis Masi, um, Fran and, and from everything I've seen, I, I, I certainly look forward to. Voting in the affirmative for your appointment. Sis Masi, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Heather Duñez. Uh, Senator, uh, Clint Rigel, if you have any questions for the nominee.
Sure, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Um, first of all, congratulations on, uh, your nomination. I did read over your packet and you do seem, as, as my colleagues mentioned, as most of them mentioned, you seem very qualified based on your experience, uh. With the conservation and the environment. One of the questions I have for you, I really only have one question is, um. And it kind of is jumping off of Senator Duñez's, uh, comments. What do you think needs to be done to truly? End, uh, illegal dumping on Guam?
Uh, we need to really pull our efforts together, you know, all the groups out there that are working together. We really need to. Um, you know, join forces and, um. And just work together. Um, also, I think that a lot of education and outreach again. Uh, to the community about the harmfulness of, you know, illegal dumping into our. Uh, around our island and near, near like the aquifer, for example, um, you know, we need to let them know what those impacts are like. You, you could be drinking and showering, um, in water that, you know, you just went and dumped trash on, so it's like. Uh, those things seep into the ground and so I think people are not aware of that and. Like I said in the beginning, when I first started at my career. I felt like people in Saipan didn't know anything about the environment, so I started there and I was like. We need to start educating the public about the importance of the environment and I think. With regards to illegal dumping, we need to continue. I know that. It's something that everybody's doing, but we still need to keep doing it and we still need to get into. Into the minds of these people that, you know. This is, this is harmful to our environment, so.
Thank you for, I'm glad you said that. I agree with the education. I think that's a really important part. I remember growing up that there are more, there seemed to be more. Local educational campaigns against littering. I remember there was a Don't Mess With Guam campaign. And some other similar ones and now there doesn't seem to be, um, anything, um, as out there repeatedly. I think if. If we do more to educate and, um, come up with some sort of marketing campaign from a marketing perspective to really. Uh, educate the public, especially the youth about the, about the dangers and, and the. And the environmental consequences of illegal dumping and legal littering. I have no other, uh, questions. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Rigel. So, um, being that there are no other persons here to testify, um, I want to thank you for, uh, Ms. Castro for accepting the nomination. And I look forward to your confirmation as well as, um, the contributions that you, uh, can provide to, um, Guam EPA and our island. I also want to just also for the record, uh, state that we received written testimony in support of your nomination. Uh, Erin Darrington, uh, sustainable, sustainability specialist from Saipan. Uh, Janice Castro, um, the Department of Coastal Resource Management, uh, of the CNMI. Bureau of Environmental and Coastal Quality. Uh, we also received testimony in support from Vaji Luhon. Um, very well-known member of this community, um, who worked in the coastal resource, uh, protection as well. Uh, we also received written testimony and support from Lola Leon Guerrel from BSP, as well as Becky Cruz Lozama. So, um, thank you for your, uh, again, for your nomination and, um. This confirmation hearing is, has been, has duly heard. So Sis Masi, Ms. Castro.
Yeah, Sis Masi, everybody.
Have a great day. Uh, so now to move on to the next item of our agenda is to hear testimony for the executive appointment of. Mr. Wayne W. Bigler to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Board. Of, um, Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board of Directors. So, uh, there is no one here to testify, uh, so we'd like to invite the nominee, uh, to provide his testimony. Good morning, Mr. Bigler.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Uh, good morning, Senators. Good morning, everybody. How for the Guam? Um, you know, the prior, uh, board nominee, obviously she has a wealth of information, wealth of background in EPA. Uh, I don't have that. Uh, one thing I do have is passion. Uh, you know, my father was in the, uh, Department of Agriculture, Con- Conservation Officer, so. You know, I lived that growing up, uh, you know, regarding the environment, uh, as far as preservation, conservation, simple stuff and as a. Senator Rigel mentioned, you know, so I'll start as ki- ki- uh, kids being young. Uh, so we got first-hand education, uh, you know, simple stuff like when you're brushing your teeth, shut off the water or when you're soaking yourself. You know, shut off the water or don't, don't burn plastic. And so those are different elements in terms of, of preservation, conservation and, you know, even like, you know, clean air. Um, so when I was nominated by the governor and a lieutenant governor, um, you know, I was very, uh, honored. Uh, it's an opportunity for me to learn more about Guam EPA. Uh it's an opportunity for me to learn more about Guam EPA. Uh you know, one thing uh as previously mentioned, it's, you know, education and also enforcement. And I I think uh not being learning more about about the environment of EPA outside looking in uh with my background, uh I worked in an HR department and and one thing of you know, we always maintain is integrity and looking at things objectively. Uh you know, coupled with, you know, work ethic. So um that's where I would like to bring my background into the board, learn more from uh not only the board members, but the administrator engage and interact with uh EPA uh employees and uh you know, as as Fran mentioned, you know, the education and enforcement part, obviously with with enforcement, uh we need the resources, which is staff uh to go out there and be visible out at these different uh job sites to ensure uh that not only, hey, we're gonna catch an employer employer that's doing wrong, it's let's educate them as well as far as uh and I know EPA in the past has been uh instrumental in working with different companies, including the company I work for uh in terms of, you know, ensuring that we're following proper protocol. Uh but you know, uh again, there's a process and you know, it's it's a, it's gonna be a continual work in progress.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you, Mr Bigler. Does that conclude your testimony?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Uh well, first of all, thank you for accepting the nomination. Um and I I see that your background is in HR um and that you currently work for Cabris Marine. Is that correct?
Cabris Marine Corporation, yes.
So um, you know, uh I I guess you said earlier that uh your father was a conservation officer uh for the Department of Ag. I think that that uh I'm sure that probably brings a lot of institutional knowledge regards to some of the environmental issues. Um so what do you see as your um, what do you see as one of the priorities um serving in the board uh for Guam PA?
Uh just well, serving as a board is essentially looking what what current program uh programs are being evaluated right now. Uh and then focusing on those things. Um and then essentially just building on um, you know, what's pre-existing. And then uh, you know, as Fran mentioned, outreach and getting feedback from the community as well. Uh not just uh the board acting on things, it's getting feedback from the community, getting feedback from the internal stakeholders, from the the EPA staff and then uh, you know, putting into action, discussing it and see what kind of um avenues we can have to explore as far as reaching a solution for like, you know, uh pollution, illegal dumping, et cetera.
Okay, sorry, I'm gonna withhold my questions for now because I see that the administrator is back on. So I would like to um perhaps invite him to speak uh uh get provide testimony on on your nomination.
Thank you, Senator. Yeah, thank you, Senator. Um like Fran, uh you guys would have my written testimony. Uh Mr Wayne Bigler, I is someone that I've known uh for a few years. Um I know his HR uh uh down at the port. So I was actually running into in uh the PUG meetings uh for the port. He's also, I've known him since uh he's he was an athlete. Uh I know he is is he has an intent to continue to serve as a a public servant. I think he would be a great board member. He gives a facet uh uh view that uh we don't currently have. We have attorneys, we have we have businessmen, we have um environmentalists. Uh so I totally support uh Mr Wayne Bigler for the different views that he could provide as someone from that coming from the port uh ops as well as um you know, the HR situation. So um even though he's not per se a environmentalist, it is good to have a well-rounded board. Uh Mr Bigler is uh as I've known him, it is a very outstanding uh individual and citizen of Guam, and he will do the right things to keep uh to keep Guam PA and our policy up to pe- up to speed uh with the rest of the accomplishments of Guam. As and again, uh having someone from the port, which is a very very key part of Guam and having some that knowledge will assist us in in ensuring that uh our port is secure and environmentally sound. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Walter. Um so I guess to to resume the the line of questioning. Um so yeah, so it was mentioned that you are, you have a background in HR. Um so how can that be utilized, you think? Uh or or I guess basically your prof- in your professional capacity uh serving as um uh in in, I guess, management position. Uh what do you think you bring to the board?
Yeah, a lot, a lot of it is uh essentially, you know, l- looking at the different policies and procedures. Um trying to resolve things uh the lowest level possible, um doing a due diligence, investigations uh and essentially coming up with, you know, a solution as a result of that uh communication. So uh hearing all uh stakeholders, uh seeing what's in the best interest for not only EPA but for the island of Guam. Uh and so with with my background, uh you know, I've been fortunate to um experience different uh situations, uh conflict resolutions, and just work at things objectively. Uh try to keep, look at things in its most simplest uh format versus rationalizing about what the the problem is, let's focus towards a solution.
Okay, thank you. And so how do you determine what's the best interest?
Uh li- uh reviewing what what is um presented in front of us, facts, uh testimonies. Um you know, research from other localities similar to, you know, our our islands. Um and uh present that with with the board.
Okay, and then as far as uh, so the board has to uphold the laws, right? Are you familiar the um the laws that uh for that apply to the environment? Like Guam PA uh has auth- authority to to enforce?
Um, not really. I'm looking forward to learning more. Uh I have seen articles, you know, in, you know, coverage as far as uh violations and what have you. Uh but that's the extent as far as what my knowledge is. Uh I have read uh briefly like the seventeen different uh acts that uh EPA is responsible for. Uh and I'm looking forward to uh learning more about each one.
Okay, thank you so much. Um and and as far as a conflict of interest, uh can you recognize uh when there's a conflict of interest?
Yes, most definitely. Uh I think in terms of, you know, uh whether it's discussing my line of industry or any type of notice of violations, uh any discussions on that matter, I would need to recuse myself.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Mr Bigler. Um I'd like to open to my colleagues now, Senator Tony Ada.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. Uh Mr Bigler, uh thank you for accepting the governor's uh nomination to be on the Guam Environmental Protection Board. Um you're just filling the unexpired term of Mr Bob Perrin, and that expires in four months, I believe. So what what would be your priority in the next four months to bring to the forefront uh that you see that uh needs to be done at EPA?
Yeah, whether it's four months or four years, it's really collaborating with our fellow board members and all the stakeholders. Let's see what those priorities are. I mean, this this is the timeline that I have to work with and, you know, uh you know, see what we can champion to find uh solutions. Like, you know, big thing again is like, you know, illegal dumping and island uh uh pollution. So um it it's just, I I I I think that's a start. Um a- a- as far as what I would uh focus on and then get the feedback from other board members and um members of the community. Uh in- including the staff of EPA, especially because they, you know, they're the boots on the ground. They they know what is going on out there and then getting their feedback and then focus our our energy on that.
Uh that's great to hear that, you know, four months or four years that, you know, you're gonna be hitting the ground running. That's uh, that's awesome. The, you know, um you, I guess, working for Cabris Marine has has an advantage in that, you know, uh you you see what goes on with the water pollution, you know, and uh how how things can, how you can be very instrumental in seeing what goes on down at the Port Authority, right? You know, that area there and achieving uh helping to keep our waterways clean. Uh what what is your, what is your thoughts on on um our water, our waterways, the pollution, the pollution that goes on down at the uh down at the ports?
Uh, one thing I appreciate is there's the immediate uh action when it comes to any type of a water type of pollution. Uh we do have an always full response uh company. Um you know, we a- anything related to to the waterfront, uh I mean, we only have one harbor. And we want to make sure we protect that harbor. It's not just pollution-wise, but vessels coming in and out. Uh I wanted, want to ensure that these vessels don't ground uh because that also impacts our our marine environment. Uh so it's really important getting all stakeholders uh you know, uh under the guidance of Senator Joanne Brown, who was the previous uh or uh GM. Uh you know, we've been very fortunate uh, you know, to mitigate a lot of any potential hazardous water type pollution. And then also, you know, the community stakeholders, uh we do West Coast Guard, uh you know, all all the other shipping agents uh meeting on a monthly basis. Uh so we discuss uh polu- pollution, uh the environment, those are are constant topics that uh are are brought up during our our meetings.
Yeah, that's great because, you know, the you've got this balance, right? You know, Ms Castro, that came before with the land and you, you know, bringing uh, you may not think that you have a vast wealth of knowledge on environmental protection, but there you go. You know, you just said it uh right on the onset for, you know, on our waterways and how we can protect the you know, the the environment in at the Port Authority and just the waterway, the waters in in general. Uh man, I thank you for your your service and uh for accepting the governor's nomination. And I look forward to to voting on your nomination as well. Thank you, Mr Bigler. Madam Chair, that's the only questions I have.
Great, thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Joanne Brown?
Thank you very much, uh Madam Chair. I certainly also appreciate um the interest of Mr Bigler in coming forward uh to to sit on the Guam PA Board. Yes, the name Wayne Bigler is a a known name. Certainly, uh as he mentioned, his dad worked in conservation at Department of Agriculture. And I've also had the opportunity over the years also to work with him and and his fellow uh conservation officers. Um I did want to ask, and and certainly you've elaborated to a certain degree, as as Fran Castro did with her appointment, but I I think we have a sense of uh, we'd like to see more visibility and engagement of Guam PA publicly. Uh it may be occurring, but you don't sense that presence. Um you know, I think there's a need as an enforcement regulatory agency for Guam PA to have a bigger presence in the public engagement and the public dialogue, particularly with regards to enforcement. We're hearing a lot, uh you know, Senator Clint Rigel brought up about, you know, the issue obviously with illegal dumping and, you know, instead of lessening somehow, we're seeing that problem continue to grow. Um and I bring this up because I had a call last week from a former retired Guam PA employee who during our tenure, and he certainly retired a number of years after I left the agency, but was one of our top enforcement uh personnel with regards to illegal dumping, all the way down to cigarette butt. I mean, if he witnessed you dumping a cigarette out of your car and he just happened to be around, uh you got a ticket and he'd see you in court if you challenged it. And we're not sensing as much presence with regards to Guam PA's ability to do enforcement, because a lot of people say, oh, we need to strengthen Guam PA. Guam PA has considerable regulatory authority. Um but we don't sense that presence. And yes, I understand there's less resources, but you know, we had the same amount of resources back then and we were able to effectively use that and have that presence in the community. And certainly violators knew that if they didn't address compliance, and of course, you always give violators the opportunity first and foremost to address compliance and and pursue it through that direction. But obviously, if they did not, then obviously, you know, the next step was to do uh respective enforcement that involve, not just notice the violations, but actually pursuing the matter and taking it further to court if necessary. Um so I wanted to get your input on how do you think uh being a member of the board, you can contribute to um re-engaging Guam PA publicly with the community and having that presence uh and having the public also know that the agency is addressing these enforcement violations that we we continue to see grow in the community.
Yeah, uh uh and one thing with this day and age, I mean, um you know, as far as illegal dumping, I'm gonna see, I don't know if you can see my phone, but essentially, you know, household hazard waste disposal. This was just sent in one of my family chats as far as where we can dispose of our our household batteries, um you know, um white goods and what have you. Uh so, you know, we we we, at this day and age, I mean, we 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 should really um you know, get the word out there using um social media. Uh you know, just being out there with with uh getting what EPA is all about, educating the community further uh in terms of um, you know, how throwing a cigarette butt can, you know, really impact, you know, our environment. Um so i- it's really a you know, a matter of communication, outreach, and I, you know, it it's really um we need to maximize uh social media, uh using these platforms to to get the word out. Uh then in in terms of enforcement, I mean, we we just gotta think out of the box. I mean, we mentioned previously uh EPA is understaffed and uh in order to go out and uh, you know, really enforce this, thinking out of the box, looking for those you have a lot of uh passionate citizens out there that have a huge concern uh with EPA. And it's not necessarily uh individuals just, you know, getting together, doing this coastal cleanups, but you 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 see uh, you know, some individuals by themselves, just the side of the road, picking up trash. Uh getting some of these folks like, you know, familiar or maybe something similar to like a peace officer, if you will, uh getting them uh, you know, like they're within their respective communities, their neighborhood watches, if you will, uh reporting those type of violations can just, you know, help with the uh, you know, with the enforcement part.
Well, I think, you know, as Fran Castro had relayed uh with the Toka app that was just recently put in place, I I assume that Guam PA is hooked into that as well. Um certainly to get community assistance in identifying these violations, but then also, of course, the regulatory authority rests with the agency, and that's what the agency needs to execute. And just to follow up on this call I received from this uh retired former Gu- I know Guam PA employee was uh his frustration and you know, I don't know if it's the nature of our work in the legislature, but we often, you know, people call us because they're they're uh you know, upset sometimes in in their engagement and dealing with government and Guam agencies. So imagine, you know, working most of your career at Guam PA and then retiring and then calling in a violation. In his case, he did not feel the agency was very responsive to his concerns of uh, you know, an area in Dedido that he had identified as a dumping area. And I'm sure there are many around the island. Uh but the location, according to him, was not too far from one of our public schools, elementary schools, and he just did not feel that the response he was receiving from the personnel he talked to um was responsive. It's like, oh, you know, okay, yes, sir, you know, another another dumping site. And um, you know, he's a very responsible individual. Like I said during our tenure, at least when I was there, he was our top enforcer. And he did this as a collateral duty. That was not his main assignment at Guam PA. And you're gonna find you have a lot of good people that will extend beyond what their their job assignment is and take on these collateral duties to assist the agency. And the agency uh was just as lean then as it is now with an even bigger load uh with regards to not just regular enforcement, but dealing with significant construction on the island that we had to regulate at the same time. So I know it's possible because I've done it myself, and I'd like to see the agency more engaged. So I certainly hope with your contribution and your perspective uh that you can facilitate that with your administrator throughout the agency, because sometimes there's a sense of apathy and there's a sense of, oh, you know, we have limited resources, we can't do this and we can't do that. And then, you know, we end up in the malaise of doing nothing. Um and I I'm, you know, I was disheartened to hear someone who spent most of their career and their investment at Guam PA, retired from Guam PA, you know, come back and call me in their frustration because they just did not feel that the personnel that he spoke to at the agency were as responsive as he thought they should have been. Uh considering, you know, it's just something as a community member now, he's reporting uh and just wanted to find out, can the agency follow up and check? I mean, this is someone that did go through the trash cans and the uh you know, trash bags and and try and identify especially illegal dumping, who the possible uh parties could be, and he pursued it and and he made that extra effort. And you know, certainly might see, people might say, oh, that's old school, but you know, that's what the public expects. They expect us in our respective job assignments to be responsible. And I I'd hate to think that his impression of the agency, which is where it was as of last week, was just, wow, you know, it's it's, I don't sense that same sense of dedication and engagement uh that he was used to. So I hope with your time there, Mr Bigler, you can help uh your agency uh help facilitate that and get that sense of, if it's there, it needs to be, you know, it needs to be exploited out there. We need to see it, we need to hear it, we need to feel it. So I hope you can help contribute to that. And thank you for your, thank you for your service and stepping forward. I I'm sure the four months will result in another appointment and we'll probably be talking in a few months for your 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 soon-to-be reconfirmation to the Guam PA Board. And with that, Madam Chair, I don't have any further questions. I do have to step out for another meeting, but but thank you very much for the opportunity. your your soon-to-be reconfirmation to the Guam E P A board. And with that, Madam Chair, I don't have any further questions. I do have to step out for another meeting, but but thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to ask question of the nominees to the Guam E P A board this morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Uh, Senator Titikwe, uh, you're recognized.
Sidoos Massey, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair. I keep saying speaker today. It's a rough day. Anyways, thank you so much, Mr. Bigler, for stepping up to the plate. Um, you know, having a sense of confidence by, you know, Senator Brown, who of course we know is at EPA for for many years before and then been in that position that um oversees our environment, uh, and very passionate about it. And that's the one thing that you mentioned. And I think passion is very, very, very important to have. You know, so don't underestimate that. That is, that is really important. The second one thing I think our oversight chair is very, you know, passionate about is ethics and morals in in this anybody taking on a position in a board or even as a director or such. So I think it's very important, uh, that, um, you know, your morals and ethics are are also right beside your passion. But you know, I think you've underestimated yourself. I think the public needs to know that you actually have a wealth of knowledge in many other fields that will contribute to EPA. I mean, it was talked about when Fran mentioned how to encourage more staff or, you know, build upon EA lacks. And you have, uh, you know, experience in human resources administration. You know, that's that's one of uh your traits. You also have a budget analysis. You have vendor consumer relationship management. Progen and process and management, labor re- relations, employee relations, recruitment, retention. You know, you have a great and impressive background yourself, Wayne. So don't underestimate you on that. And uh with all that knowledge, uh, you're bringing to this board. We're very grateful for you taking on this position. And I I just ask uh that you please keep those those traits uh in mind when it comes to ethics, um, protect EPA's uh funding. You know, to to build upon, please, you know, um, and I wish you the best of luck. And if there's anything that you want to really um touch on that's important as far as programs. What what else would that be that maybe you haven't mentioned already that you might want to mention again?
Yep, well, programs, uh, you know, I mean, a- a- again, it's the the outreach and the education and you know, you got the reduce, reuse, recycle in school and let's take it a step further and uh, you know, help help, you know, you know, the kids, uh teach their parents as far as on that this is what's gonna happen if we, you know, we we, you know, for trash out or what have you. So uh, you know, i- it's just, uh, I I I think I would like to focus a lot on on education and outreach. Uh, cause it it all starts starts there. And, uh, you know, you have the enforcement component because, uh, again, you know, ignorance is not bliss. A lot of people just don't know that if you burn plastic, it impacts the ozone layer. So it's not, hey, let's, you know, go on, uh, and and companies in that respect too. Uh, they may not know what they're doing is adversely impacting the environment. So uh, rather than just going out and finding them is, let's make sure that, you know, it's you know, uh, I guess you can call it an expensive education, but you know, lessons learned is let let work with these, uh, you know, the the I think maybe these these small business. Because small businesses are the backbone of our economy. And, you know, we want to ensure that they're educated as well to ensure that they're they're not violating any uh EPA, uh EPA, uh, you know, programs.
Well, thank you so much. And I also wanted to mention that you also is um a uh field investigator uh with United States Investigation Service. So that's gonna come a long way, uh, especially when you're going out there looking for those people violating um, the laws that are set forth by uh EPA and Guam, basically. So thank you again. Thank you, Madam uh Chair for the opportunity. And I wish you the very best, Wayne. Good luck to you. Thank you for stepping up. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Titikwe, for pointing out, um, yeah, his resume, um, as well. Uh, thank, uh, Senator Chris Duñez, you're recognized.
Sidoos Massey, Madam Chair, and um once again, uh, Wayne, uh, I concur with my colleagues. Thank you for accepting the governor's call. Um, and stepping up to the plate to serve on this uh very important board. Uh, I know that, uh, with extensive years that I've had in government and and looking at boards, I really think it's always important when you have that private sector uh, you know, level of experience. And as has been mentioned, uh, throughout, you know, what's uh enumerated throughout your packet. Uh, the diversity in terms of uh what you're involved in and what you bring forward. Uh, my only question would be, you know, uh, you, I think you've mentioned a lot of things in terms of what you see with regard to visibility and the like. And so I would think more on the regulatory side, particularly with federal funds and and the like. It it really comes down to research. But I just want to see if you concur, you know, preparation for meetings is gonna involve a lot of research and uh do you concur with that observation?
Yes, definitely. Uh, because you need to now, uh, as far as, you know, you gotta obviously educate yourself and familiarize yourself with, you know, the different uh funding programs that are out there and ensuring that, you know, it's being utilized for the respective areas. Um, so anyone better prepare yourself to uh present and, you know, uh, put together whatever documentation and supporting information uh for for these fundings.
So, yeah, as I close, Madam Chair, and I want to apologize to the rest of the panel for the balance of the meeting today. There's a very important meeting uh happening down at uh the Speaker's Office with regard to a a current bill that we're engaged in with medical malpractice. So I'm gonna step out. I'll listen to the balance of the hearing for other nominees, but Ryan, I'm I'm encouraged, uh, uh, you know, uh, by your, um, you know, by your, uh your presentation, and I'm encouraged very much so, I mean, Wayne, excuse me, that you you have, um, you know, presented today. And I'm I'm particularly, uh, heartened by the fact that you really uh, take research as part of a very important part of deliberation. And so I look forward to uh voting on your nomination and encourage you uh, you know, to continue to uh serve as you've stepped up to the plate now. So sidoos Massey, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, thank you, Senator Duñez. Uh, Senator Regal.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first of all, Wayne, Mr. Bigler, congratulations on your nomination. I know, uh, Mr. Bigler personally, I know his whole family, and I know them to be a really good honorable family. You come from good people. I know your dad, as you mentioned earlier, uh, to me is a very respect respect respectable and honorable man, and I have a lot of respect uh for your father and your whole family. So I have no doubt that you'll do well in this position. It's good to know that, uh, you know, we've got a uh, a young local boy from Tato Gidsetnia, eh, from the village of Jotnia, right? Um, so uh, and you come from a good family, and I trust that you'll do good and make the right decisions. The only thing I have to say is to um encourage you to not be afraid to give NOVs to people that are breaking the law. And don't be afraid to uphold those NOVs. Um, should companies or people try to appeal them uh before your board. Um, don't be afraid to give NOVs and uphold those NOVs where it's necessary and where people have broken the law. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Senator Regal. So I think that's the, that concludes the rest of my, um, I don't know, Tony Addison or Ada, do you have any additional questions or comments?
No, I don't, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
All right. So thank you, Mr. Bigler, uh, for accepting the nomination. I know you're a very busy man. You have family, you have a full-time position and uh in the management even. And uh, I I know it takes a lot to to um accept government service. And, um, like my colleagues have mentioned, um, they they know your background and they know, uh, your family. And so I I do trust that you have the the good intentions of serving on this board as well as the expertise. Um, you bring a certain es- expertise to this board uh that can um help complement everybody else's, um everybody else's and talents. So again, I do appreciate your acceptance of the nomination uh for this board. It's a very critical board. And, um uh, yeah, I look forward to seeing your contributions. Look forward to the uh conf- your confirmation as well. So thank you so much and, um, have a great day.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Have a good day.
You too. All right. So now we're gonna move on to, um, the nominations for the Guam Unarmed Combat Commission. And so to my knowledge, this this commission has not been fully impaneled in the history of this, um of this, uh, the law since the law was created in two thousand nine. And so this, the the purpose of this commission is to regulate an industry that, um, I guess is looking to restart. Um, some of the responsibilities of this commission obviously is to uphold the laws of, um under eleven G C A chapter seven. And some of those responsibilities include, uh, adopting rules and regulations. So currently, there are the rules and regs that were created for the previous commission, which is the Wrestling and Boxing Commission are now null and void. And so with this commission, one of the pri- uh, primary, um tasks that this commission would have to do is to create their, the uh adopt rules and regulations for the administration of this perhaps new industry. Some of these rules and regulations includes, um, qualification of ring officials uh which are required at exhibitions or contests. Uh, procedures for court clearances. Uh, investigation of criminal history of all ring officials and employees of the commission. Uh, and any applicant of of the commission wishes to investigate. Uh, it also has powers, uh, for, uh, that are related to the compensation of ring officials. Uh, overseeing qualifications of licensees. Uh, creating rules for competition, weighing of contestants. Scoring decisions, age limits, weight limits, physical conditions, and classification of contestants. Some of the other responsibilities of the commission is that they shall review and approve all forms of contracts between sponsors, licensees, promoters, and contestants. Uh, they may appoint one or more official representatives to be designated as inspectors and may appoint one chief inspector. They have the authority to affiliate with any other state uh, or national boxing commission or athletic authority. Another important, um duty is the issuing and revoking of licenses as well as to deny or approve any applications of any license. So, um that is some of the, some of the things that are listed in this law. Um, so now I would like to move on to the hearing for our first nominee. Uh, it's the executive appointment of Ms. Maria M. Dunn to serve as a member sports tourism representative of Guam Unarmed Combat Commission. Uh, so we don't have anyone here to testify, believe uh, on her behalf, but we did receive written testimony from, I'm sorry, um, my mistake, we do have somebody uh, to testify. Um, Ms. Camacho, uh, you're recognized.
Thank you, Senator. And actually, what I'll do is, since Maria's going first, is my testimony is really for both of them, Maria and Joseph. So I'll just go ahead and uh give my testimony, uh, since Maria's up first.
Okay, yes, please proceed.
Hafaday Honorable Senator Perez and Senators of the thirty-sixth Guam Legislature. My name is Jennifer Camacho, and I'm here to formally express my support for both Maria Dunn and Joey Crisostomo Junior to the Guam Unarmed Combat Commission. Their years of experience, more than two decades combined, as athletes and their vast knowledge of martial arts will contribute significantly to this commission. In addition, their passion for the sport and industry will ensure this commission operates with the utmost integrity. And I know they will do everything they can to protect the athletes while ensuring the laws and rules of this commission are carried through. Sports on Guam have long had a positive impact on our community, and martial arts is one of the most popular sports due to its diversity in disciplines such as wrestling, jiu-jitsu, kickboxing, you name it. It's refreshing to see young and passionate citizens in our community stepping up to serve on our government commission. And I believe there are no better nominees than Maria Dunn and Joey Crisostomo Junior to do this. Thank you.
Sidoos Massey, Ms. Camacho. Um, so we do have, uh, I believe Darren Blair, uh, sorry, Bear, sent a written testimony. It's a part of Maria Dunn, uh, basically in his per- personal capacity. Uh, I believe there's no one else here to testify. If so, please speak up. Okay, so in that case, I would like to invite, uh, the nominee herself to to present her testimony. Um, Ms. Dunn, you're you're welcome.
Hello, good morning. Um, thank you very much, uh, for having me here. Good morning, Honorable Senators Senator Perez, Senator Ada, Senator Regal, as well as all other participants present for today's public hearing. I am honored and grateful, uh, to Governor Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Ternaro for nominating me as a board member for the Guam Unarmed Combat Commission in the area of sports tourism. Um, thank you very much for those who have sent in testimon- uh testimonies and who have testified on my behalf today. I'd just like to share a little bit about my background as an athlete for the island of Guam. I have been a wrestler since nineteen ninety-eight, about the age of eleven, and I started competing nationally or internationally for Guam at the age of fourteen in the year two thousand to two thousand one. Um, I was one of the uh pioneer female wrestlers for the island of Guam in the in the arena of high school wrestling. Now there is currently a women's league for wrestling in the high schools, whereas before, um, because of Title IX, we were able to wrestle with the guys. And so I consider that a major, uh, improvement in in high school wrestling, especially on the front for women's equity in sport. Um, I wrestled in college for two years and I became an All-American, meaning that I placed, uh, top two nationally in the States in the sport of wrestling. Um, I continued to wrestle for Guam internationally in over ten Oceania Regional Championships. Um, and I was also a two-time Olympian in the year two thousand eight and two thousand twelve, representing Guam in Beijing. And then later in London. Um, so I've had a pretty, pretty healthy career in wrestling. Throughout the time that I was wrestling, I also had um, experience and interest, um, in the sports of boxing and Muay Thai, as well as jiu-jitsu. I practiced jiu-jitsu for maybe four to five years. Um, currently, I coach wrestling at the high school level, um deeply invested in the youth of Guam, youth wrestling, youth youth sports, youth exposure to these sports. Um, especially in dispelling myths about, um, unarmed combat sports being too dangerous for kids to practice. Whereas I believe they are very, um, excellent in teaching discipline and and skill. It's very important, um, for mental strength as well. So at the moment, I am currently an official. I spent five or six years coaching at the high school level. Um, I am the president of the nonprofit Snake Pit Wrestling Academy Guam, where we teach wrestling to kids years five up to eighteen. And I am a head referee for Guam, or not Guam, for G W A Guam Wrestling Association at the moment. Currently, I am an elementary school principal. Other than my, um former, being a former competitor and current official, I am hopeful that my twenty-plus years of experience in this competitive arena will provide valuable input and insights into the future of sport, of unarmed combat sport on the island of Guam. In, um, it is my greatest hopes that within the next four years, if I am to be elected and placed on this board um, that I can help in the development of this commission to create a strong foundation. Like you have said, it's it's never been fully like culminated, and I would really like to, um, be a part of that, to build the strong foundation for these sporting events. Um, especially ones that are unbiased, that reflect the integrity and provide enrichment and growth to the athletes and the spectators who will take part in unarmed combat sports on Guam, not just Guam residents, but those who choose to travel to Guam for, um, the sake of competing in unarmed combat on Guam. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dunn. Um, yes, I think you have a very impressive background, and I think it's so important that, you know, with this industry that we, um, the people that serve on this commission. You know, I think, I feel that you you would have the best interest of the participants at heart. Um, and that you're, you, you know, you have so much commitment to, uh, wrestling and growing that and being unbiased. I think that's that's very critical, uh, critical attributes to be on this commission. And the fact that you're willing to commit the time, I mean, considering that you are also a principal of an elementary school, that that is a lot of work as it is, and that you're willing to to grow this, um industry in a safe manner. I think that's that's so important. Um, so I guess, uh, I guess a couple of things, um you know, what do you, what would you like to contribute? So this, this nomination, should you you know, what do you, what, would you like to contribute? So this, this nomination should be confirmed by the legislature, uh is for a four-year term. Um what do you, what would you like to see accomplished within those four years?
Ideally, um to the best of, of our abilities as, as a board, if I am to be elected on this board is to um hold, hold true to, to the things that you said were, were necessary for this commission, things that have not the groundwork has not yet been laid, like, you know, assigning a chief inspector, um coming up with certain laws and certain rules, and then also um coming up with, I guess, procedures and protocols for the issuing or revoking of licenses. Procedures and protocols for, for events themselves, um for coming to, coming to decisions regarding the medical board, making sure that the, the foundation, at four years, it seems long, but um there's a lot that needs to be done and I feel that um if we can my, my biggest hope is to be able to really lay down a solid um groundwork and structure for, for these rules and for these laws, for the health and safety of the spectators, for the, the structure of the organization in regards to events and hosting events. That's something that it's, it's, it sounds lofty, but it's something that I, I would dedicate my time for.
Yeah, thank you so much. And I think being a, a woman athlete, I think you are definitely a role model as well uh to other um girls and, and out there that, you know, would like to potentially make this their, their uh profession too. Um as well as, you know, being a role model for um being, be accountable, being accountable, creating uh uh something that's strong foundationally. Um I think you provide a lot of um, you know, opportunities for, for girls that are aspiring and boys aspiring to, to be in this industry. So, so thank you for stepping up to the plate and accepting this nomination. Um you know, and, and serving Guam in, in other capacities. So um thank you so much. Uh at this time, I would like to open up the floor to my colleagues for any questions. Uh Senator Tony Ada.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. Uh I don't have any questions. Ms. Dunn, thank you for accepting the nomination from Governor Lou Leon Guerrero. I think uh you know, this commission that hasn't been uh active in many years, uh the challenges are gonna be ahead of you guys, but uh just know that you're gonna have the support of the, you know, all those around you. You know, we wanna make sure that any board or commission that is uh brought to the forefront and when you guys wanna make a difference in how things are being done out there, especially the regulatory side of it, coming up with the rules and regulations, uh we're here to support. So anything that we can do to support you in making sure that the, the, the board does become a, a very active and productive board, then we're here for you. But thank you for accepting the nomination. I look forward to voting on your confirmation. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the, the time and the opportunity.
Thank you.
So does Massey. Senator Ada, Senator Rigel.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh no questions, just some comments. Uh first of all, congratulations uh to uh Maria Dunn on your nomination. Um uh I'm uh, for those who don't know, I'm kind of a big uh MMA nerd. I like to call myself. I'm really into mixed martial arts and so I, I'm very well of your career and uh well uh well aware of your accomplishments as a wrestler. Um and um and the stuff that you give back to the community, um including uh the wrestling camps. I think you guys just had a summer camp recently, if I'm not mistaken. And I'm really uh happy with all of that you've done for the community and giving back to the kids and helping instill discipline in our youth. Um my main comment is that uh uh I really hope that you and the other board members who are being nominated, please, please just hit the ground running. Let's get this thing going. Let's get this thing off the ground. There is a hunger for MMA on Guam. We have some of the best talent in the world. We're joined right now, I can see online with us Frank the Crank Camacho, our very own fighter in the Ultimate Fighting Championship, which is the premier fighting organization in the world. We have so many fighters from our small island have been able to make it to these great heights, and I know we can achieve only greater if we can really get um the MMA community together. Get some MMA events going again. You know, everyone's aware of the Pacific Extreme Combat P X C was going for a long time. Unfortunately, we haven't had any real MMA events for a long time, and we need to get this going so we can get the next generation of Frank the Crank Camachos and uh the next generation of Roman De La Cruz. I also see him online as well. Uh Roman De La Cruz is the founder of Fuck Eye, which is one of Guam's first um major brands on Guam, local brands on Guam that is spread now internationally. Um he's one of the founders of Jiu-Jitsu and MMA on Guam, and uh we've accomplished so much despite not even having a commission in place and not having an MMA event for so many years now. Imagine what we can accomplish when we get everything together, get everyone together, and really solidify our place in the mixed martial arts world. So uh Mrs. Dunn and the other nominees, I encourage you, please hit the ground running. Think of the big picture of our place in the world and how we can really show Guam's talent and showcase Guam's talent in the MMA community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator Rigel. Um and thank you so much, Ms. Dunn, for accepting the nomination. Uh we do, I look forward to your confirmation um and serving on this board. Uh so does Massey for all that you've done. So thank you very much and have a great day.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. So now we're gonna move on to the next item of our agenda, uh is hearing testimony on executive appointment of Mr. Joseph A. Chrisostamo Junior to serve as a member, uh mixed martial arts representative of the Guam Unarmed Combat Commission. Uh so notices were sent to Department of Revenue and Taxation, and we do have a couple of those that are signed up here today to testify on his behalf. So you already heard testimony from um Jennifer, Ms. Jennifer Camacho. So we like to, I'd like to recognize the next person on the list is uh Frank the Crank Camacho to provide his testimony.
Hafaday, Hafaday, everyone, Hafaday Senators, uh just mic check, testing. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, uh we can hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Okay, got it. Yeah, so first off, um honorable senators, thank you so much. Hafaday, again, my name is uh Frank, my last name is not Crank, it's uh Frank Camacho. I'm a resident of Zonia, Guam, and I am a professional mixed martial artist with a record of twenty-three wins and nine losses. And I am currently a lightweight in the Ultimate Fighting Championships. You know, giving my testimony to the Guam unarmed uh to, to, to you honorable senators, to everyone on this Zoom call and uh for Joey Chrisostamo for uh with the Guam Unarmed Combat Commission, it really hits home for me because I've grown and I've built my career with the Guam Unarmed Co- uh Combat Commission, you know, because of this commission. Uh you know, and the rules and the laws and its oversight over many events of Guam over the years, it's really enabled me and enabled my career, and it's really taken me to the pinnacle of mixed martial arts and which I'm still currently fighting in the UFC. So uh having Joey uh as a nominee, um it's great and it's, and it's, I, I think he would be such an asset because not only is uh Joey a Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu Brown Belt, um which takes years of dedication and heart and, and, and discipline, he is also a professional mixed martial artist himself. He has competed all around the world with many or in many organizations and dealing with many different commissions uh representing the island of Guam. You know, not only is he a competitor, uh Joey is also a small business owner of Let's Ride Guam and you know, knows all the ins and outs of running a small business and, and with taxes and with all the different intricate uh moving parts of running a business or running an organization. And most importantly, you know, I've really had the honor and privilege to have Joey as a teammate, you know, where I've come to know him uh more on a profession, on, on not only a professional level, but on a personal level. You know, he's Joey's always been an ambassador to Guam MMA, you know, not only in his Trumoro and Marianas fighting spirit, but uh his embodiment of martial arts and, you know, his, the, the martial arts mentality of honor, of respect, of massive amounts of work ethic and discipline, you know, all of which it really translates all this, these characteristics of Joey really translates into his mixed martial arts fight game. But it also really translates into his uh relationships and and his life. You know, you really, I get, I get to, I have the honor of personally seeing it translating to his life and, you know, Joey is, he is an asset to Guam mixed martial arts. And Joey will be an asset and a resource of knowledge. He will be a resource of experience, you know, as a board member of the Guam Unarmed Combat Commission. Thank you.
Uh thank you so much, Mr. Camacho, for your testimony. Um and yeah, definitely bring some uh light to the, the industry itself and the importance of this commission for growing, um you know, perhaps or um being a role model for other, other young youth uh to participate and, and also to you know, as um inspiration as well. Right? Thank you very much. Uh now I'd like to recognize Roman De La Cruz for his testimony. Sorry, we, we can't hear you. We, we can't hear. Not yet. Still can't hear you.
Okay, how about now?
Yes, can hear you now. Thank you.
Okay, Hafaday, everybody, thank you very much for your time. And of course, I have uh submitted uh a written um testimonial for Maria Dunn and that stands, and it's for Joey Chrisostamo. Everything that Frank had said, uh I echo completely. I think um with Joey, uh he has uh his experience as a fan, a competitor, an athlete, um and an ambassador for Guam is uh in, is completely valuable towards the future that we wanna build for uh the potential that's very obvious with uh with local mixed martial arts. I think also his experience competing in events overseas is gonna be a very uh healthy and critical transition if we wanna grow our sport back into uh, uh if we wanna grow our sport into the other countries as we're seeing the globalization of mixed martial arts, you know, that whole statement when Dana White had said that he had wanted mixed martial arts to become the biggest sport in the world, it sounded so asinine before, but I mean, if you're taking a look at how uh mixed martial arts had led the way in uh professional, in broadcasting professional sports uh globally, um it really gives you a good indicator of um of where we could take this potential. So uh yes, everything that Frank had said and everything that Jen had said uh about Maria and Joey completely echo and looking forward to uh seeing them stir the pot for a better future.
Thank you so much, Roman, for your, your testimony. Um so now I'd like to invite ac- actually, we have others uh on the uh here, in the hearing. Uh just wanted to invite anybody else if they wanna speak on his behalf. If you can turn on your visuals at this time or let us know if you, you would like to provide testimony. Okay, so we're not hearing anybody. Um Joyce Chrisostamo signed up. Uh I don't know if you wanted to provide testimony. So it looks like she might be having a little issues, uh technical issues at this time. Um all right. So we did also receive written testimony from Bryant Pangolinan uh from organization Sabre Jiu-Jitsu from Concord, California, uh supporting the nomination of Joey Chrisostamo Junior. Okay, so maybe we'll come back to Joyce. Uh we can't seem to get a good connection. All right. So Joey, Joey, I'd like to rec- uh recognize you now uh to provide your testimony.
Hafaday, Honorable Senator Perez and the members of the thirty-sixth Guam Legislature. I've been an MMA uh athlete for over ten years. Sorry, this is just a little background, a little nervous. Uh thank you, everyone, that did a testimony. I truly appreciate it. Um my name is Joseph Chrisostamo Junior, and I'm humbled to be nominated for a seat on the Guam Unarmed Combat Commission to represent the mixed martial arts sector, also known as MMA. I've been an MMA athlete for over ten years and have worked with numerous athletes, organizers and promoters. My background includes a brown belt in jiu-jitsu and also competed in multiple MMA and jiu-jitsu events on and off island. Part of MMA and what it teaches is discipline, physical fitness, focus, self-defense, self-confidence, and most importantly, respect, which is the foundation of our Trumoro culture. This has been a longtime passion of mine, and I've seen the benefits this sport has provided our local community, keeping children off the streets while teaching important life lessons. Currently, Guam has twenty-three martial arts gyms all over the island. Per capita, Guam has the most jiu-jitsu gyms in the nation, a testament to the island's love of martial arts. And I'm committed to growing this sport here on Guam. Most importantly to this commission, I commit to studying, understanding and enforcing chapter seven Guam Unarmed Combat Commission Act of two thousand nine. I will effectively execute the rules and laws. With my experience as an MMA athlete and fighter, I am confidently say that my commitment to this commission and it and all it serves will be critical to the forthcoming creation of these rules as well as ensure the safety of the athletes, fans and stakeholders. It is an honor being nominated for this seat. Again, my name is Joey Chrisostamo Junior, and I humbly ask for your support on this critical seat for the Guam Unarmed Combat Commission. So does Massey.
This is Massey, uh Joey, for your testimony, and I think it's great to see a lot of the young generation uh taking up the leadership uh to be on this commission. It's, it's so important, um you know, to establish, you know, proper rules and regulations and to be able to regulate. I think that's the importance of this commission, is to regulate this industry. And um we do, I do, um you know, I'm very grateful for you, you accepting the nomination. Um but I do have a couple of questions for you. Um and then uh basically, so some of the things I see when, when we're starting a new industry is um perhaps the the fi- uh financial accountability, right, of, of this industry. So what do you think is needed, you know, as a business owner, right? I believe you're a business owner. Um you know, what do you think is needed to assure that this industry is financially accountable and transparent?
What I think is needed, well, first off, uh since this commission is pretty much being revived, is, is just setting goals and timeline. Um and getting together with the commission and, and making things happen, uh being active is, is really important and I, I, I think that in, in uh, in business and towards this commission, if I am um presented with this seat, I think just setting a goal and timeline that we can follow and, and execute.
Okay, so yeah, I hear that you're very excited and ready to get this industry off the ground, but as far as like, you know, safeguards, because you know, there's a lot of money handling uh taking place with these, you know, larger, these large, these are pretty big events, right? So what do you think would be important to establish as far as ensuring the money is uh being properly um uh managed uh so that the industry can continue to grow?
Making sure that the taxes are, you know, are properly looked at and uh just following the regulations and guidelines. From our previous on, on chapter seven. And, and just making sure that we follow all the protocols and uh and taxes and everything like that.
And as far as working for a commission, is this your first commission that you'll be serving i- in the government?
This is my first, yes.
So it's a brand new experience. And in, I guess, you know, you're probably familiar, but um as far as working with other members that maybe you don't agree with, um you know, how do you think you can navigate such a thing if there's um things that need to be resolved within a group?
Just an unbiased uh approach. I think that I have that. Uh just being unbiased and, and working well with others, uh that's just some yeah, since, since the beginning of time.
Okay, great, great. And I think it's again so important to have people, um sorry, um athletes that are now, um they know the industry from that perspective, and now they have, they're, they're now in a position, you know, potential position to regulate industry. I think it's important to have that perspective. And I think, I believe that's what you bring, um you know, knowledge about how athletes are being treated. And maybe perhaps what can be changed. Do you see from that perspective, anything in the industry that you think might need changing?
Yes, there's some, there's some rules with the, the weigh-ins on, on uh protecting the fighters. I think we can definitely change and adopt some of the already established rule sets, such as the UFC. We have, we have a handful of, of knowledge that uh that other events and organizations can offer, you know, just You know, just safeties first with the contestants. And I think that, um, that's our number one, uh, rule. If we're thinking about our contestants and just the athletes itself, is safety. And I think from there, we can adopt some of the stuff that's already happening because this is a global sport. And I know we're able to adopt a lot of the rules that's already there.
Great. And what do you see accomplishing in these four years? So the term is four years and should you be confirmed? Uh, what do you see, what would you like to accomplish or see, uh, that this commission has accomplished?
Well, first, I think we can, uh, set goals on and timelines on just establishing the rules and regulations. I know that right now, there's nothing right now. So there's a lot of, a lot of things that need to happen on meetings and, um, and just us coming together to form a really good foundation for the commission and choose regulation. After that, I think Guam's going to have amazing events. Uh, we're going to bring a lot of tourism, uh, a lot of positive things to the economy once we get going.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much, um, Mr. Crisostomo, for your acceptance of this nomination and your commitment to the sport. And, um, so I would like to now, um, open the floor to my colleagues for any questions. Senator Tony Ada.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Crisostomo, for answering the governor's call to step up to the plate and serve on the commission. You know, I didn't realize how many gyms that we have out there. And, uh, it's, it's truly amazing to know that we have the largest per capita in, in the MMA world. And I think that, you know, it's very important that we do set rules and regulations so that when people do attend or, you know, they do, um, uh, engage in the sport, that they do it safely and they know what they're doing and that we're regulating how it's being done, most especially, you know, like, like I said, for, for the safety of our people and those that participate. Where, where do you see, uh, the commission going in the, in the next couple of years now that we're, we're getting everyone together and that, uh, you know, we, we put these rules and regulations into place? Where, where do you hope to see the commission, uh, in the very near future?
So being my first time on a commission, uh, they're, setting the rules would be the number one priority right now, the regulations. And I don't want to put a timeline on it, but typically it's take a year. But with the right people, I, I think we can go move forward and faster than that. And in the near, I mean, just near future, we can definitely have, um, international events here on island and also our local events. Uh, just, just having it active, I think, um, with the safety in our, in mind, I think all gyms and participants will definitely benefit from it.
Yeah, definitely. I, I agree with you. And, uh, that's why I'm looking forward to ensuring that this commission moves forward and that we get, uh, the board completely filled and, you know, that you guys can do the job that, uh, you know, you guys were nominated to do, Madam Chair. And, you know, I look forward to having their nominations placed on, uh, for our next session. And I, I look forward to voting on their nominations. Thank you, Mr. Crisostomo, for, uh, stepping up to the plate again and answering the call, the call of Governor Young Guerrero. And I look forward to, uh, voting on your confirmation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you so much, Senator Ada. Senator Rigel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, uh, no questions, just comments again. Congratulations, uh, Mr. Crisostomo, on your nomination. And, um, you know, please hit the ground running, just as I said, for, um, Mrs. Dunn, to please hit the ground running, get these rules and regulations in order. I'm glad that you brought up the issue of, uh, weight cuts. That's very important. That shows that, um, of course, I know you're very knowledgeable about it, uh, with your MMA experience. A lot of people don't realize that weight cutting can actually be one of the more dangerous parts of the sport. So I'm glad you brought that up. Please look at other organizations and find out what's the best, uh, method of weight cutting regulations for Guam. I, I've heard that One FC has some pretty good weight cutting rules. So take a look at that. I'm sure you'll take a look at all the different weight cutting regulations that are out there and make sure that, uh, safety of our fighters is paramount and key. And I'm sure you, being a fighter yourself, that, uh, you know that and that you'll bear that in mind, when working on regulating, uh, mixed martial arts on Guam. I'm glad you also brought up, uh, to the public that we have the highest per capita Jiu-Jitsu gyms. It's funny because I was just speaking about that, uh, with a buddy of mine who, uh, grew up on Guam, but went to the States, came, got into Jiu-Jitsu in the States, came back to Guam, he's now here. He was asking me for recommendations for Jiu-Jitsu gyms. I just sent him the list of all the Jiu-Jitsu gyms and he goes, wow, I didn't know there was that many Jiu-Jitsu gyms on Guam. And he said, it's probably the highest per capita. I think we probably have the highest number of black belts in Jiu-Jitsu per capita. That, but I mean, I haven't counted it, but I think, I wouldn't be surprised if we have the highest number of black belts in Jiu-Jitsu per capita. And definitely we have a good, uh, track record now with the UFC as far as number of people getting into the UFC, which it's difficult to get into the UFC. We've just heard from Frank the Crank Camacho and we've got, uh, Rocky Martinez, who just had a fight, uh, a week ago or so. We've got, uh, John Tuck, we've got Trev Jones. So we've got so many great athletes here coming from this tiny island. And I know you guys know that, so I support you guys in your endeavors to legitimize and regulate this sport here on Guam so that we can show the rest of the world what we're truly capable of. Thank you, uh, Madam Speaker, uh, Madam Chair, and thank you, uh, Mr. Crisostomo.
All right, thank you, Senator Rigel. Yes, it's very exciting. I think this is an exciting moment for, for all of those that are present here today because this, this is a new industry that you guys are going to take off the ground. And, um, you know, we, we thank you for your service and your commitment to, to, to making, establishing a, a sure footing. So, uh, I, this committee, uh, if anybody would like to continue to, uh, provide support or provide testimony, um, the committee will continue to receive written testimony until four PM, Monday, July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Please address testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning. It can be dropped off of the mailboxes of the Guam Congress Building or email to office@senatorparas.org. If there are no further testimonies or questions, the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Research, Statistics, Research and Planning will now adjourn this meeting. Uh, the time is now ten fifty-eight AM. Thank you so much and have a great day, everybody. Adios.